Is for citizens comment, own.
Ordinance number 2017-04 in ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located off Old Nashville Road owned by Jennifer Rose Buford, Rita Olivia Kidder, and James Ricky Jones, as shown on Williamson County Tax Map 42, parcel 74, map 42, parcel 79, and map 22, parcel 167, from RS 40 to RS 15, RPUD.
Okay, thank you. At this time, let the citizens know. Divine. Do we have the paper for them to sign? Don't they need to... okay, just to make sure. To let the citizens know, we'll give you an opportunity to come up and speak on this matter. I will just have to call you. Show hands if you want to come, and I'll try to acknowledge you. Come up and please state your name and your address for the record, and I will open it up now for whoever would like to speak. Go ahead. Come to the podium, please.
I'm Teresa Harrison. I live at 7810 Old Nashville Road, and we have a number of concerns because the roads are narrow. A lot of the homes are located next to the road, and you're putting a lot of traffic on this road. If that amount of home goes in, it's going to end up putting over 900 vehicles on the road. We just had Jones Lane that caved in one day last week, and there's a number of little things that goes on that. There's pothos that's not being fixed, or they'll be patched, and they'll have like a... it's almost like a speed bump in the patch. So it's... I'm really concerned because I like my neighborhood the way it is. I'm okay with growth. I'm okay with the house per acre. It's just that I don't think PUDs are good for our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
If I may, you mentioned the 900 cars on the road. Which project are you referring to?
Well, you're putting in 39 homes on the 13-point acres, and then there's that 131 acres that is trying to be rezoned into the city, annexed into the city and then rezoned. And if you're estimating 310 homes there, plus the 39, and then three cars per household, and plus the homes that's already there, you know. So that's where I'm getting that amount of vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up in the back.
How you doing? My name's Nicholas Ventrell. I live on 7313 Old Nashville Road. You know, my concern is going to be with schools. You know, how many people are coming in wanting to be in Williamson County School District? What's it going to do to our elementary schools, our junior high? You know, we only have one junior high and one high school. You know, I'm looking at my son's education. You know, he goes to SAC, so you know, I don't want it to be overpopulated and not get the education that he deserves. And plus with traffic, you know, traffic's already getting hard to turn out on 100 every morning. I mean, it seems like every month it gets worse and worse. You know, and I commute everywhere, all over middle Tennessee, and I just don't want it to get any worse than what it is. If they are, you know, plan for it. Find a way to widen or give us passing roads or something on 100. I mean, I know it's not an easy task, but I just don't want them to throw in the houses thinking it's going to be, you know, more tax money or whatever the deal is. I just don't see a benefit to it. You know, that's my concern, is mainly the schools and traffic.
Okay. Anybody have any questions before or statements?
Are you opposed to both of these projects?
Yes.
What was your last name again, sir?
Ventrell.
How do you spell that?
Vizin Victor. E-N-T-R-E-L-L-A.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I know I had somebody... yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Gary W. Donnelly, Jr. I live at 7821 Old Nashville Road, and I'm opposed to having the zoning changed from RS 40 to RS 15. I would rather the growth stay more in line with what is already there. That's my concern. Plus, a question I have too is, are these houses that you're proposing, will they be on the city sewer system, or how do you plan on taking care of that? Thank you.
Okay, this subdivision that we're talking about right now, the 39, they do have taps, so it's not a sand filtration or drip system. So they have 20 taps, and we'll get 20 more just to answer that question. So the 39 is not on a step system. Okay?
And Mayor, if I may, that's why I'm asking the question, which subdivision we're talking about, because the one that the public hearing owns tonight is on the 13.39 acres, and that's why I was asking the question earlier about which one they're actually... you're discussing.
Okay, well, that... this particular development that's in question will back right up to our property, and we're on the public sewer system at our place, and I had heard indirectly that it was going to be on a step system, so that was mainly what I was concerned about.
This actually... they did get water taps from Dixon Water Authority. The one, the larger one at the end of the street is potential, you know, it'll be a step system. So that... not that they were totally wrong, but I think a lot of people are confusing the two subdivisions, which it makes it hard, you know, to understand which one. But the smaller one does have the taps.
Good, thank you.
Yes, please come up.
My name's Brent Jones. I live at 7214 Jones Lane and Old Nashville Highway. My question is, if you annex this property in, what are you going to do about the traffic trying to get out on the main highway of 100? As of right now, as you go down Jones Lane to 100, you can hardly get out. If you go down Old Nashville Highway and go through the four-way stop sign and go down to where the... the end of the road down there where the red light is, you cannot get out down there. There's not enough room between the red light and that street to get out. I am opposed, you know, to annex this in. I don't want it. And are y'all going to plan on putting in red lights at each one of these places and on Jones Lane and different places like that, so we can get in and out, or how you going to let it run? That's what I just want to know.
Mr. Jones, if I may, this is not an annexation request. This is a rezoning request. The one that you made, and that's what the mayor was just talking about, and I was talking about earlier, the one that you may be referring to that is a request for annexation is the larger subdivision that's being proposed?
No, that's for both of them. I mean, 39 acres, I mean, 39 homes going in up above my house, you can't hardly get out now. I'm talking about all of them.
About... okay.
Not just that one.
I just wanted to clarify.
I'm against the annexation and the 39, you know, what you're going to do about the roads and the red lights and stuff like that. Can you give me an answer on that? If you're planning on putting something like that in, or... that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
How you doing?
Hi, I'm doing good. How are you?
My name's Roger Tony. I live down on Old Nashville Road, 7512 Old Nashville Road. We're totally against this, 100 percent. We've been here for 15 years. We moved here because it was rural, and we moved down on Old Nashville Road because it was kind of rural. What we've seen in the last couple of years, particularly with the development and the new apartment complex, we've just seen an amazing amount of traffic issues. That little road is only 18 feet wide at its widest, and we have a tremendous amount of speeding. A lot of people use that for a cut-through to get by Old Nashville... Fairview Boulevard, and I've actually sent Ms. Carroll some video of the speeders. I've talked to Terry when he was the chief of police. I've talked to Scott Collins at the school system. We live on a half-acre lot. If you cut into that to widen that road or to put in new water, sewer, power, you're going to destroy that neighborhood for a year to get it done. We don't think we want to live through that. I'm opposed to all of it, not just the big plot, but the little one too because of that. We've even had school bus issues, you know, coming down there. I sent a video to... or actually came and talked to Chief Humphries about it. School bus is speeding 17 miles an hour over the speed limit. It's 30 mile an hour speed limit there, and people just blaze down that road now. Can you imagine if you put 39 houses, 349 houses? What's going to happen there? It ain't going to be pretty. And we don't want to live in that. None of us do. Just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
I'm Alice Cuarto, and I live at 7426 Old Nashville Road. And I understand the concerns with the traffic and the concerns with the sewer, but to me, it's more than that. My husband and I moved up here 12 years ago from South Florida. When we were in South Florida, we kept moving farther north and west, north and west, north and west, because we want that country feel. We want to live in a rural area. We don't want to live in a big city. If we wanted to live in Spring Hill, we would have moved to Spring Hill. All right, we specifically chose here because it's rural, and I think the city council should put a moratorium on PUDs. I think they should try to keep an acre per house. I think it would be a good idea to try to get a bypass so we don't have all of Hickman County coming through us, or something to try to keep this rural. It's a beautiful little community. I teach at Hickman County High School, and they don't have the community because there's no little city center and stuff. We have a great time out here when we come to the Fourth of July. I know that Nashville's growing, and that Fairview has to grow, but I think we need to try to slow it down. I think we need to keep it looking rural. I think we need to... I mean, I love Fairview the way it is. I don't want it to be... if I wanted to live in Nashville, in Bellevue, in Spring Hill, I would live there. But I think it's, like I say, more than just the roads and the sewer. It's trying to keep it our hometown.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
Hi. My name's Rob Fuller. I live at 7905 Old Nashville Road. I'm against this subdivision. In addition to the roads and the schools, I'm concerned about just the density of this development. It's way higher than anything around. Not just the one... the massive one we're talking about later, but the one tonight, 39 houses on this small 13-acre space. It doesn't fit in with our community. You know, people walking up and down our street every day. I mean, yeah, sometimes you do have people who are speeding, but my son drives his bike up and down that road, and, yeah, it's not wide enough for the amount of traffic that you're going to put on it. I'm also concerned about just the amount of noise and light pollution and sound pollution that this will bring to the neighborhood. It's not going to be... it's not going to be what it is now. I'm not against all growth, but this is a level of density that seems way beyond anything that's around it. And in addition to that, I'm a little bit concerned about the way that the shape of the land is. It all drains back into Mr. Jones' pond, and you put that many houses, you're going to have mortal oil, you're going to have antifreeze, you're going to have all kinds of runoff going down into that pond. I don't know if you've done any studies about how that's going to work, or if you've thought about it, but that's, you know, if there are fish in there, I'd probably kill them. I don't know. So that's just all I'm going to say.
And that's in the bigger subdivision, the one that...
No.
Not this one we're talking about?
No, I'm talking about this one.
But the one... the 13-acre one has a...
The way that the land is, it runs off, and now that runs off down into that pond that's on Jones Lane, across from Jones Lane, where the cave-in was, where the road damage was earlier, that pond right there. So...
Okay.
Can I ask a question? I'm just curious. Out of the folks that have talked so far, there's a stretch of houses that was built some time ago that are between Ferneville Road and Jones Lane. If you're traveling from Ferneville Road toward Jones Lane, there's some houses on the right. How many of the people that have talked live in one of those homes? Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, last call. I'm going to close the public hearing. If no one else wants to speak. Okay, the meeting's closed. Okay, and I would like to open tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. It's May 4, 2017, and it is 7:20 PM. The first item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge, and if you'll please stand. Please bow with me as we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for everything you've given us. Thank you for all the citizens that have come out tonight to share their opinions on our community. Thanks for all those people that have put themselves out there to apply for the planning commission. We just lift them up to you, Lord. As we make decisions tonight, Lord, please be with us. May we focus on what's the best and the good of the community. Please be with each and every commissioners as they decide tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the second item on the agenda is the approved agenda.
Mayor, if I may, I think there may be an addition to the agenda. Mr. Collins, did the resolution authorizing the retirement of the patrol dog, did that need to be added
Yes, sir.
to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
So I guess we would need to add that under NH.
Is there... do we have something on that? Is this one of these things on the desk?
It was.
What is it? Which one?
It's Resolution Number 06-17. Authorizing the retirement of the K-9 dog.
I got it. Okay, and that would go under new business?
Mayor, if we could remove item 8B from the consent agenda, please?
Yes. So that will go under old business.
And with those changes, I move for approval.
Okay.
With your approval.
Okay. We got a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Third item on the agenda is citizens comments. Did we have anybody sign up for citizens comments? Okay.
I think they all spoke already.
Okay, great. That will take us to item four, awards and recognition. Anything tonight? Okay. And that would be item five, public announcements. Okay, we'll keep moving. Item six, staff comments. Ms. Johnson, do you have anything? Okay, and we welcome our new city planner, Kristen. How's it going? Would you like to just take a minute and introduce yourself, and if there's anything from the codes in you need to say or update?
I'm just glad to be here with you in Fairview. I am very honored to have the privilege to be your city planner. I spent the last six years working for the city of Laverne, and I'm happy to be in a greener, beautiful city. I don't have anything as far as codes goes or anything related to this agenda tonight. It's only my fourth day here, so still kind of getting settled, but I do look forward to working with all of you as we move forward with the city of Fairview.
Great, glad to have you. And you're not a stranger to Fairview.
Yeah, it's been about six years since I worked here, but I did briefly work as the contract planner for Ford State back in 2009.
Yes, so welcome back. You know a little bit about us. Do you have anything, Micah? Are you just here for support? Okay, and Mr. Paisley, are you here? Keith? Nope. Okay, so no park updates? Anything? Nobody else? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, approval of the minutes from the April 20, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and that will bring us to old business. A, second and final reading of ordinance number 2017-4.
In ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located off Old Nashville Road owned by Jennifer Rose Buford, Rita Olivia Kidder, and James Ricky Jones, as shown on Williamson County Tax Map 42, parcel 74, map 42, parcel 79, and map 22, parcel 167, from RS 40 to RS 15 residential PUD.
Okay, and will the representative of this property come up? Since we have so much interest, if you will just take some time explaining what you're doing and what y'all's proposed plan is?
We have amended this plan from the last meeting to increase the comments and concerns that y'all had at our last meeting that we attended on this particular development. It is showing sidewalks on Old Nashville. I know it was discussion about sidewalks for quite some time, whether they be at this location or an agreed-upon location between myself and the city. We went ahead and showed them on this plaque just so they were on there. I mean, it's just 39 lots, and it's a product that we think fits well in Fairview. We think our houses that we construct on these is in high demand. Also, we don't feel that... you know, I understand everybody's concerns. I didn't have a development this big in front of my house, but we did have an acre lot that ended up with four houses on it, right across from my house with this same zoning. I mean, I wasn't in love with it, but it fit the plan. It fit the subdivision regs. It fit the land use map, so there wasn't anything I could do about it. So, and it ended up being a nice... you know, it's only four houses, but they ended up nice, and the neighbors there are all nice. So, you know, neighbors are... can be good. They're not always bad.
Okay. Any of the board have any questions, or...
I do have some questions. On the... as I understand it, and we've had this discussion before, Water Authority of Dixon County is approving sewer taps in 20 lot... 20...
20 tap increments.
20 tap increments, thank you. And your proposed subdivision is 39 lots. If... and as I look at the preliminary master development plan, it's not broken up into phases. So my question, and this is a question that has been raised in the past, is if you get these initial 20 taps, you build the initial 20 homes, and then the Water Authority of Dixon County says, "No, we're not giving you any other taps. You're not getting the other 19," then where does that leave the rest of the subdivision? In other words, will you still be required at that point, even though you can't build it out, to come in and put top coats on the roads and basically finish it out for the 20 existing homeowners?
That would be a city question, but I assume that we would. Now, in saying that, if you... I don't know if you can blow that up or zoom in on any part of that at all. The pump station for these, for all 39 lots, is back close to the cul-de-sac. So the plan would be on the original 20 was the road on the eastern side or the right side, if the way you're looking at that map. We would put that section of road in first to accommodate... because the sewer line's got to go back that way anyway to tie into that, the new pump station we're proposing. And we just don't draw phase lines on that because it's just the rezoning aspect of it. It would just be 20. And I did, I had a conversation with Michael Adams... no, Michael Rogers. I get them too confused all the time, late last week. And I know when you say 2018, that sounds like a long ways, but we're already in May, so it'll be here before you know it. But he's... he told me that if they believe in mid to late 2018, they're going to have a definite direction for the sewer. Now, that may be misleading from what he told me, but that's what he says. So, you know, our intent would be to finish it all, and from talking to him, there's been no other request for sewer taps. So I feel like we're in a fairly good position to try to get all 39.
Well, I guess from the city standpoint, and maybe this is a question for the administration, if we don't require developers to come in and break these up into phases, then what authority do we have to require them to go in and finish out the existing subdivision if they in fact can't get the additional sewer taps? And the reason I ask that is because we have multiple smaller projects going that there's that 20-tap limit on, and we have multiple projects in the city of Fairview right now that are left sort of unfinished in terms of going in and putting, you know, the topping on the roads and otherwise. So from the administration's standpoint, where does that leave us as a city if we don't require that to be phased in?
Commissioner, the short answer would be, we would not have the... we don't have the ability to force a developer to complete the subdivision, obviously, for whatever reasons. Now, with us being able to require bonds, letters of credit, whatever that thing is, we can enhance those. So phases that would be substantially complete, we could complete those out as a part of a performance bond. For instance, as part of the discussion, if we had phase one, two, or three, phase one was complete, phase two was complete, phase three was not complete, then we would not have the ability to force that phase three be in fact completed. We would need to address our bonds and other assurances so that if phase three or whatever phase, subsequent phase was not completed, then the city could go in and use those, either the bond proceed or the letter of credit or whatever other financing option there is, to substantially complete the phases that had been done.
And that bond or letter of credit is applicable to the entire subdivision, not just if it was broken up into phases? In other words, it would be applicable to the...
Generally, they are only applicable to the phases that are under consideration that have been completed or partially completed. that have been completed or partially completed.
So, that's my question. Do we need to, do we need to require the developer to identify, "This is what we're building. These are the 20 that we're building," because we know we have these 20 taps as one phase, and then the additional, whatever the number is, as an additional phase? So that if what I'm saying could happen, happens, then we can call that bond or that letter of credit to complete the roads that may not have been finished or whatever? Am I making sense? I just know this has been a problem in the past.
You, you are. The part of the discuss, part of the issue that would be with that is the city isn't going to own that property. There would be no infrastructure that the city would own. There would be future development that obviously would bring that. But let's assume we're talking about a two-phase subdivision, where we have 20 lots in one phase and 20 lots in the second phase. The first phase is complete, sewer's done, it's there. The sewer is then denied for the second 20, 20 homes. At that point, that's potentially uncleared property, just wooded property or some other thing, and that's going to require construction and other things that the city wouldn't really have enforcement authority to do. Now, we certainly could complete the city-owned infrastructure, what would be city-owned infrastructure for the phase one or the first 20. But to answer your question, I don't believe without a substantial amount of legal work that we could go through and really construct phase two absent the homes.
But could we at least complete the road?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Existing, and I think that's what we're trying to get.
Yes, absolutely, you can.
To make it appear to be a completed subdivision.
Absolutely. Now, as, as a part of that, I would offer one change or suggest one change as, as these go. Currently, and let's use the letter of credit as an example, there's a subdivision here locally where there have been letters of credit. I believe the first phase of the, of the neighborhood was substantially completed in 2004. The, the second layer of asphalt, sidewalks, and other things have been delayed. Each year, they've gotten an extension on that letter of credit. To, to highlight Commissioner Crutcher's question, they've gotten extensions each year in the anticipation of getting additional sewer to complete the second phase. What's happened is they've come to the city or the planning commission, and they've gotten a one-year extension each year for each of the last 14 years. So, in that instance, my, my suggestion would be to, to establish the provision where any extensions of bonds or letters of credits be approved by the Board of Commissioners and not the Planning Commission, so that the board has the ability to, to say what moves forward and what does not move forward, if that makes sense. To answer the, to answer your question, I would have those extensions be approved by the City Council and not the Planning Commission. So, then you can go and enforce that as the governing body of the city.
I mean, we're, we're just in a unique position because of the sewer situation in that, you know, when someone's coming forth with a proposal and it's, and there's a step system in place, we know what's going to, it's going to be in place for the entire subdivision. And once the subdivision's completed, then, you know, that's going to be the sewer, and the roads will be finished or whatever. But when it comes to the sewer taps and Dixon Water Authority only giving 20 at a time, it kind of leaves us in a spot where we don't know, you know, what the future's going to hold for that subdivision.
Right.
You know, when we approve it on the front end. And, and that's concerning, because like you said, we have some of these other subdivisions that have just never been finished because they were started and the sewer situation became what it is, and now they can't get their taps, you know, to finish the subdivision. And you have overgrown lots at the back of subdivisions, roads that are not completed that deadend into cul-de-sacs that are, some of which I think may even still be gravel in places. And there's just a lot of concerns about what's going to happen if that occurs. And it may not ever happen. They may give, they may give the additional 19 taps or 20 taps or whatever, or maybe the situation's remedied, remedied in 2018, and it's a non-issue. But I'd just like to know on the front end what we're sort of getting into.
Certainly.
Any other discussion, questions? Will, do you have any recommendations? You knew I was going to go to you. How to handle that?
To kind of work backwards from what Commissioner Crutcher's stating, in order to have a home on a lot in front of a road that may be unfinished, that home has to have a CO issued, certificate of occupancy. So, in order to get a CO, that home has to have a building permit to be built. So, we're kind of working backwards here, if you're following me. In order to get a building permit, that lot has to be created by a recorded plat. At that time, when a recorded plat, in order to be recorded, has to go through the Planning Commission. When it goes through the Planning Commission, that, at that time, is when specific phase lines would be identified. And the plat that is to be recorded, that creates, legally creates those 20 lots, would also have construction plans associated with it. And those construction plans would be bonded to the full extent of the construction for those 20 lots, including all sewer, all water, all drainage improvements, all roadway, everything is inside the right-of-way. So, to answer your question, yes, the city would absolutely have assurances by either a letter of credit or a bond to complete those roads to full completion without any cost to the city if the developer decided, for whatever reason, whether it's sewer or bankruptcy or whatever, decided that they did not want to complete the subdivision as approved through the construction plans. As far as the remaining 19 lots that were not platted in that initial 20, no. There would be no surety, but there would be no lots that had been created yet. So, you would not end up with a scenario with a homeowner who has a gravel road in front of them without any kind of surety instrument that the city holds to come in and complete that at no cost to the taxpayers. Is that where we're, is that understandable?
Ms. Rowland, kind of go with that. Would they be able to completely bulldoze the entire area? Or they can only do the 20 first?
Good question. What we would, at the time that they submitted a plat and construction plans, if they showed clearing and grubbing of the entire, is it 13 acres? 13 acres. At that time, part of the bond amount that we would recommend to the Planning Commission would include stabilization of the entire 13 acres. So, whatever construction is proposed for that phase one, that's what would be bonded and, and we would have a surety on.
So, if they do show that they're bulldozing and clearing that whole area, we would bond it for enough to at least put it in a, back in a presentable situation if it did not get completed?
Correct. We, we would bond it to such a state that we would be able to stabilize the site, meaning you would be able to establish vegetation on disturbed soil. And if they significantly changed the grading of the site such that you had runoff that resulted from unfinished grading from what would be a final plan, then we would have enough money to go in and make sure that that grading was stabilized such that we're not discharging onto adjacent properties.
One other thing I'm going to ask you about. Last Planning Commission, an issue came up about cul-de-sacs. It was an issue I did not even know about before that. In fair, under our codes, a cul-de-sac is considered a grope or say a subdivision that has just one entrance and exit, correct?
Correct.
And this development would qualify as a cul-de-sac, correct?
It would meet the legal defin, it would meet the definition that's currently in your subdivision regulations.
And my understanding is our regulations only allow for 24 homes on a cul-de-sac without granting a variance?
If it was a conventional subdivision, correct?
In essence, because this is, he's asking for a PUD designation, the entire PUD really is a variance.
It could be viewed as that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I know this is different from some of the developments we were discussing at the Planning Commission in that at least there's a loop here. One of the concerns is if something happens, the best example would be a fire. If you've got a fire at some point on this road, you could block possible access to the rest of the subdivision.
Correct.
However, in this situation, we do have a loop, which kind of alleviates some of that.
Correct. And that is a significant difference from the two that were before the Planning Commission most recently, particularly the one that had, I want to say?
79?
No, it was over 100 lots on a single street that had no loop associated with it at all. So, you had almost, I want to say probably over 2,000 linear feet. You see where this, this once, I guess, entrance from Old Nashville is approximately one lot deep? We'll say that's 100 feet. The, the comparable subdivisions that you're referencing from the Planning Commission, that little segment was almost 2,000 feet or so long. So, there was no opportunity within approximately 2,000 feet for emergency services vehicles to take a different route to get to a particular parcel that was proposed to be created.
And the design of this development does alleviate that because there is that loop there?
Correct, it does. You know, you have significantly lessened the exposure, if you will, of, of having complete blockage from a large number of homes to that one little stretch there. If something were to happen in that 100 feet, that would completely block that road.
Mr. Rowland, I have a question.
Uh huh.
You were saying that, that we could do this, that we could have bonds, we could for the 39 lots. Is that in place now? Or is that, so then we'd have to go back to the Planning Commission to be re-approved?
That, that, that would be coming before the Planning Commission at the next stage if the rezoning took place, which is the standard protocol for that.
Okay.
Your, if you were so moved, your approval tonight of the rezoning does not approve those as being legal lots that could be sold to an individual citizen to start building their home on. So, the scenario where you were, you, you have a citizen or a homeowner who has access to their lot without, that's not on a completed city street, that, that cannot happen, say it can't happen. There are a number of steps that have to take place before this lot can actually be sold and a building per, any lot on this subdivision can be sold and a building permit issued.
Okay, I, I, let me, let me make sure I understand. So, if we rezone the property, because I have Cumberland Drive in my, in my head. So, if we rezone the property, there are still lots of other steps to go through before there's any building that takes place?
Absolutely. None of the, just clarity, none of those steps would involve coming back to the Board of Commissioners. All of the subsequent steps after the rezoning action would all take place at the Planning Commission level. That would be your preliminary plat, your construction plans, and your final plat. And that's true for PUDs, that's true for conventional subdivisions as well.
All right, I have some questions if I may. I've seen on several different, or several different numbers on two different applications. One says this was 15.02 acres, I think. One says it's 13.39 acres. Is it 13.39?
39.
13.39. So, this, so the, to the, to the left of that map, is that the, and I don't know what it's called. Does it say additional space or land or?
Yes, that, that plan, that check piece is not going to remain with this development.
Okay.
It's not included in the common ground or any of those numbers. It's totally upside down.
And one of the things I was noticing in the notes from the Planning Commission was is that there was going to be a new legal description provided that did not include that.
Yes, we have, we have, we have that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that had been done, because I know that was.
The original legal, that 13 acres is going back to the way it was before this acre and a half was added to it some 10, 12 years ago.
Okay.
And Mr. Rainey, if I may ask, do you understand how bonds are issued and all that? We can't do anything until Mr. Rowland actually sets a bond. We put the bond in place, we can't go anywhere for it.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure that I knew what I was hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, and I still kind of get, I like to refer to Cumberland myself. When we approved this PUD, there's not a lot of change in, I mean, they would have to come back. So, we need to make sure it's how we want it. If we're going to approve it.
Correct.
I have some, some questions based on that, if I may. Most of the PUDs that we've seen come through lately, and I know you and I have had this discussion recently, have been because of the sewer situation and because developers are having to go to the step system. So, they need that additional space to be included in their calculation for, for density purposes. If you did a, what would be the advantage or disadvantage of doing a PUD versus just a R15 zoning?
In my opinion, the benefit to the city in particular for the PUD is, and really for some of the adjoining property owners, is it does give you a buffer around the perimeter of the property that's undisturbed or can be, could have some amenities to it, whether it be landscaping or whatever, between the new homes and the existing homes that's already there. Plus, you have, I think you require 5% of the total development to be common ground. And if you do conventional, there's no requirement for any common ground. So, it does, you know, some people might will say it clusters the lots together, but it has its benefits as well, because it gives you, you know, the buffer and, and some common ground.
So, you have larger lots if it was a straight zoning, but less common ground or less of a buffer around the perimeter of the development?
Yes, and to my knowledge, we don't, the city does not have standalone R15 zoning. It's just PUD strictly.
Okay. So, as I understand it, the setback for the perimeter is 20 feet. So, in my mind, 20 feet is not a whole lot of a buffer. I mean, I know we may call it a buffer, but in this area in particular, we have a lot of larger lots with homes that have been there for a long time that surround this area. And, you know, in 20 feet, I don't know how much of a buffer you can actually put. I mean, I don't really consider that a buffer. So, if we made that a larger buffer, a larger setback, so that we could put some landscaping or something to shield this development from the existing area, whether it's berm or otherwise, how would that affect your proposal in terms of number of lots and it can be done?
It wouldn't technically have to affect the number of lots unless the buffer just got so big that the lot size wasn't working. And I think you have a minimum lot size, if I'm not mistaken, even in R15. And you know, the beauty of the extra 20 foot, now it's not a lot, but if that rear setback, let's just say an R20. If that rear setback is 20 foot and you add 20 to it, that house is technically twice as far away from the adjoining property owner as it could be.
Say that again, so I might sort of understand what you're saying.
Let's just say the rear setback's 20 feet. And I think it's wider than that. I don't remember what they are off the top of my head. So, the rear of any of those new houses could be 20 foot to the lot.
Right.
On straight zone. But with this 20-foot buffer, we're going to be at least 40 feet from the property line. So, it doubles the distance.
I see.
If it was 20, I can't remember exactly what the rear setbacks are, but.
And these are going to be masonry products on all four sides?
Hardyboard is, is the plan for all four sides.
The current zoning is, for the density, be 1.1 houses per acre, is that correct? Under the current zoning?
R40, yes.
Okay. If you, we don't have an R15, but I guess the closest would be an R20, which is 2.2 acres, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you went with just a traditional zoning, you'd lose about 10 homes? Does that sound about right?
Probably. I'd say that's close.
Does that increase the cost of what you would charge for these lots, homes, in that situation?
Yeah, if you, if you lose 25% of your lot, lots, then those lot costs go 25%.
Mr. Maygrom?
Which drives those home prices out of that affordable range.
And what's the current price range?
Of these?
Yes, sir.
We will be around $295 to $350.
Okay. So going from $295 to $350 range, you were saying only approved for a R-20, then you're looking at probably what? Price would you be charging at that point?
You'd go to $325 to probably $375. And for the square footage that we want to build there, it'll never appraise.
Mr. Maygrom? Vice Mayor Crutcher asked about the advantages of the PUD and not the PUD. And you told us what the advantages were for the city. Are there advantages for the developer?
Being able to cluster those lots together is a slight advantage, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
With this subdivision, city would not require a traffic study on this size. But you've heard tonight, there's a lot of concern about the road. Will, do you have any suggestions on what the city could do to like either, you know, is there going to be issue with 39 houses going in and out?
The, you'd certainly add volume to the existing street system. Whether or not that volume meets a industry standard threshold to require a turn lane or signalization at upstream or downstream intersection points, I can't speak to that without having performed any kind of account study or anything like that. I think it is probably safe to say that the current cross-section of Old Nashville Road does not meet the current city standard as far as, certainly as far as width. And as we know, probably curb and gutter as well and sidewalk. So there is a existing condition road there that does not meet current city street standards due to just being an old, old road that's been in place for years. So one thing that, again, in addition, with the addition of the sidewalk along Old Nashville, I think it would certainly be prudent and reasonable to request that the appropriate right-of-way width from the center line of the road be dedicated, if it's not currently there, to provide for at least 25 feet from the center line of the road to either the current right-of-way, if that's where it is, great. If there needs to be additional right-of-way dedicated as a part of these first phases to get to 25 feet, then that would probably be certainly something that I would recommend so that a widening effort could be made in the future without having to acquire property or additional right-of-way.
And we've already done that on these planes. We've got the 25-foot from the center line to ride off of that.
Thank you. Not to put you on the spot, but, you know, hearing about it and you think about a bus coming out, they already said buses have a hard time, you know, making it down that road. So I was just kind of wondering. I know it wasn't our practice to do a traffic study, but obviously we will require that at the other subdivision that they've been speaking of tonight, but.
Well, I mean, I hear that it's not our practice to do a traffic study, but when you're asking for a PUD designation, what stops us from asking for a traffic study on any size development?
There's nothing. It's within your purview to request that. You have guidelines for the thresholds to request them that automatically, I guess, are invoked. But if there are specific circumstances on a specific existing road that you have concerns about, then you can request that at your discretion.
Can they do a traffic study where they take into account this proposed subdivision as well as what they're proposing down the road?
That can be done technically.
Because that seems to be the problem. It's not just these 39 homes. It's these 39 homes in conjecture with, we've got Phase II of Scarborough Village. We've got Kingwood. We've got this new proposed development of 310 homes. It's the accumulative effect. I think that's really what we need to see.
You know, one of my hangups on this is actually, has been the road a concern all along. I think about this subdivision. I know the quality and what's going to be brought and the demand. But here are the concerns of the citizen and realize that, and I've shared with somebody, I live in Cox Run. I'm sure there were people sitting out here when Cox Run was built not wanting, you know, the subdivision. But it's a very nice subdivision that was added to the community and we've enjoyed it. So I just want to make sure, and I don't know how much time would be hung up on this if both subdivisions didn't come at the same time in my personal opinion. But because they did, then you have this big, we know there's another subdivision. We don't know if it's going to pass or not. And there is the real concern of whether that road is, you know, capable of holding that kind of traffic. So, you know, I would feel like if we did anything or move forward, a traffic study could at least answer some questions for us.
How long does that delay a project, do a traffic study?
I'm not sure. We have a lot of data, I've never had enough.
I don't want to speak for the amount of time it might take another consultant to perform a traffic study. But, I mean, there's some data acquisition involved in forecasting traffic counts and that sort of thing that, I mean, we're certainly talking in the multiple weeks range as opposed to a few days, if that's, gives you an idea.
Well, and the other fact is the traffic study will tell us, you know, if there needs to be any like turning lanes and stuff like that. But, you know, on a narrow road anyway, will it tell us, hey, this section needs to be widened or? I don't know how many traffic studies I've actually seen. We require them, but the codes are, you know, look at them. What exactly would a traffic study tell us?
The traffic study would include geometric considerations on the cross-section of that existing street and if it would need to be widened or not.
But so it wouldn't include like, we know Taylor Road is hard to come out and there's issues with that road. It would, how far would it just go in front of that subdivision?
And I might refer you to the city attorney on this, but I know there are, there can potentially be limitations to requiring what are considered off-site improvements. Certainly you have an ability to require improvements along the existing road that fronts this particular development. But when we start talking about off-site improvements, whether that's traffic signalization or widening of a road for a full length, then we may need to get into some more specific discussions on what those parameters might look like.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what is the standard width of a street?
Currently, your standard paved width, street, paved width is 22 feet.
So we have part of this road that's 18 feet.
I'm sorry.
So we have part of this road that's 18 feet wide?
I'm not certain. I can, I am certain that a portion of the road, if not the majority or all of it, is less than 22 feet.
So we kind of know our traffic study right there, that it's already too narrow to meet code?
To meet your current standard, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Well, and what, I know it depends on the size of the study, I guess, but what is the typical cost? You have any idea of something like? And the reason I ask that question is because I understand that when we request a traffic study, we have the developer go out and hire somebody to do a traffic study.
Correct.
And it kind of seems counterintuitive to me. I mean, you have somebody going out to hire an expert to kind of give them an opinion that maybe they want. And I'm sure it's based on some data and it's somewhat, you know, not subjective.
Right.
But at the same time, I know as an attorney, we hire experts. And a lot of times, we're not going to hire an expert that's not going to come in and give an opinion that is beneficial to our case. So why would a developer do any different?
Sure.
Versus the city hiring somebody and being reimbursed from a developer is why I'm trying, I'm trying to understand that process.
A couple of things come to mind. One is there's a professional standard of care for the engineer that would stamp and have his license and certification on the line saying that I have conducted this study to industry standards. Secondly, no different than developer hiring an engineer to design the plan or design the subdivision and the roads within the subdivision and the drainage within the subdivision. You have city staff that reviews those to make sure that the assumptions that they have made in their calculations or their design are reasonable assumptions based on some standards that are in place.
I didn't even know who did traffic studies, so it's an engineer. So I know that now.
And Will, if, I know last planning commission, you made suggestions when we required a traffic study on another development, that you can make some suggestions as to which points that need to be looked at. In this situation, which points would you suggest being looked at?
I think you would, without knowing the exact names, I think you would probably be looking at the exact same intersection points of the one you're referencing, which is the one down the road for this one.
Okay.
Any concerns from the fire department at all about this development in particular?
None that I'm aware of.
The fire marshal does look at these at staff review. And any issues he has is noted at the staff report. And that's already been dealt with through the planning commission.
I think the the challenge is it's assumed that improvements to Old Nashville Road are needed. Let's go with that assumption to support not just this development, but other developments that are on or proposed for vacant property or undeveloped property on this existing street. The challenge is, how does the city equitably distribute the costs of those improvements proportional to the impacts of the specific development? And that's where I think maybe involving the city attorney in, I'm not saying tonight, obviously, this will take some time to make sure that the city is moving forward to equitably distribute those costs according to the proportionate impact of those developments. And that's where the real challenge comes into play.
And does the traffic study help with that? Saying based upon, this is the impact that this development's going to have?
If it's comprehensive enough in nature, it can, yes. That would involve, or that would require the traffic study to assess not only a specific development, but the entirety of probably that stretch of road. And not only the ones that you see or have in front of you in the near future, but any other undeveloped land that is along Old Nashville Road that might be developed at some point in the future will have an impact on that existing street to some degree.
What is the, in terms of a landscape buffer, instead of just having just the space, what kinds of requirements are consistent with other projects that we've approved in the city?
We've generally seen, apart from the space, or the width, I should say, we've generally seen evergreen trees planted on 40-foot centers. Maybe two rows of those alternating the 40-foot centers. And then some have included some lower shrubbery up to maybe a three or four-foot height and two rows of those. Some have been one or both of those. But the actual makeup of any buffer would be, could be determined by you guys.
And that surrounds the perimeter of the property?
Correct.
And if we make a motion to approve tonight, we would need to include that in there if that was part of our approval?
If that was something you desired to be a part of this development, anything, including a buffer, would need to be, my recommendation would be to be included in what you approve tonight as a result of it being a PUD and those standards being set at this stage.
And including, I know Mr. Maygrom said that he intended to use masonry products on four sides or hardy board. That would be part of our approval as well? Would that be the requirement?
If that's what was so desired.
Commissioner Crutcher, I'm not sure that you can do that. I mean, I think that this is just merely a rezoning request. So I'm not, I'm not aware that you can include certain conditions with the rezoning such as building, putting up evergreen trees or building a buffer. I'm just not familiar with that type of action. I'm not sure that can be done.
Well, and the problem we've had in the past, Mr. Potter, is when we've had these PUDs come to us for approval and we had talked about certain things being done and the developer has said that they intended to do certain things, but then it didn't get approved or passed as part of the PUD rezoning. And when it went back to planning, I was told that they then didn't have to do any of those things because it wasn't part of the approval of the Board of Commissioners. So, and it, to be honest, I'm not real clear on it. And I've never really gotten a straight answer as to what we can or should do when we're asking, when a developer is coming and asking for that PUD rezoning at the BOC level. So I don't know the answer either.
Yeah, I think, without looking into it further, I think that there would really be a requirement that would have to come at the planning commission level. So the question becomes whether or not you can, you know, approve the rezoning. This project, as Mr. Owen pointed out, is not coming back to you.
Right.
Well, the thing about it is, once we approve the PUD, whatever's owned here is, it sticks. And it would have to come back to the board to reapprove. So we've always been told, whatever changes we needed to make, it had to be done at the Board of Commissioners level to ensure that you wanted, you know, what you wanted was set. And when we tried to make changes on the planning commission level after the board approved, we were advised by our attorney at the time that we could not make changes without going back to the board.
I would like to know the answer to it, to be honest. And I know, I know Mr. Potter obviously needs more time to look into it to see if we can or can't do that. But I would like to know that if we approve a PUD zoning, does it come in as approved by the BOC? Because I know it goes back to the planning commission, but when it goes back to the planning commission, it's just for submission of those documents that Mr. Owen talked about earlier. And then at that point, as long as it met the city standards, it would come in at that point?
Yeah, the way that the current PUD regulations are written are such that the preliminary master development plan is a part of the PUD rezoning action. And so the PUD zoning becomes the preliminary master development plan. And so when subsequent submittals are presented to the city through the planning commission, there's a provision- there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that says, as long as those subsequent submittals are in substantial conformance to the approved preliminary master development plan, then they have the right to move forward with approvals as, as long as it meets those, is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary master development plan. So I, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea to have Mr. Potter take a look at that. My standpoint, I'd love to have another opinion on that, but I think, yeah, that's kinda where we are at this stage. Absent of a specific, so kinda the catch-all is this. If there is not specific information on the preliminary master development plan for a specific item, and nothing's really coming to mind right now, but absent of information specifically listed on the preliminary master development plan or within the PUD rezoning application, then we revert back to your standards and your sub regs and your zoning ordinance if there's not a, something specifically addressed in those two documents with a PUD. So you still have a standard of care, and that allows you not to have to review every little bit of minutia information with a preliminary master development plan. And so we can revert back to those existing standards if they're not addressed on the preliminary plan.
Well, and that's, that's really the question, is can we ask more of a PUD? I mean, because they're asking us to change our requirements, and it was my impression that we could because, you know, they're not building to our normal standard within the guidelines of the PUD that we can ask them for these requirements. So that's kinda what I want cleared up, too. And I hate to put you on the spot, but do you have any, Kristen, if there's any knowledge you wanna share on the matter?
I'm curious, has there been a preliminary master development plan presented to the BOC?
It wasn't in our packet. That's the first one we've seen.
Generally, my experience has been that it's, has a lot more involved than that. That just looks like a plat for a neighborhood, but generally speaking, I, usually, we require a design booklet that will show the materials, the elevations, proposed landscaping provisions, and what, and that design booklet or preliminary master development plan is tied to that PUD rezoning. So then, when it comes back to planning commission, should it be approved, it has to be, it has to be built that way. And any changes that are suggested by the developer in those later stages have to come back for reapproval at this level.
That helps. Thank you. I know at the planning commission, we had, I don't think this one, you gave us, I don't have it, you have yours, so will we? It, it doesn't have all the detail in there.
It's the same map. I think at this point, I'm gonna move to defer this matter so that our attorney can look into this with Mr. Owens to see, because Mr. Owens is the keeper of the sub regs, as I understand, as to what's current. And we can get a definite answer on this issue. I don't like going forward not being certain. So I'd ask at this point to defer this to the next meeting.
Okay. We got a motion to defer?
My second.
Okay, you got a first and second. Any discussions?
Can, as part of, as part of whatever comes back, the things that Kristen just spoke about, can we get that, that information to Kristen?
What I'm confused about, it's frustrating because I know she's new, but we have not redone this with anybody in the past. I wanna be treated like everybody before me. This fits your design criteria, this fits your land use map, it fits it all. That is not the same plan that you had before, that's got the change on it that you all requested at your last meeting. So deferring is only, you know, costing us money. Matter of fact, you know, my contract's about to expire. I've got to do something. So that's where I'm at. I'm not asking for something new. This fits all of your regs and all your design criteria.
See, that's the difficulty. I, I hear it fits all of our regs, but one of the things that we have been, that we have discussed in the past is when someone comes in and they ask for that PUD designation, that there may be things above and beyond our regs for a standard subdivision that we can require. So yeah, that may meet all of our regs for a standard subdivision, but because it's a PUD, because we're agreeing to give you the ability to pack those houses in more densely, there may be things that we can require that we otherwise wouldn't be able to require in a straight zoning, which is why I asked that question initially. If we did a straight zoning, you know, how would that affect the, the development? Because that could have been an option. So that's the difficulty that I have, and, and we don't really have a clear answer on that. Because I do have concern about the, the buffer between the, the other homes. I mean, because we're now gonna have a lot of homes on smaller lots that are, that's sort of in a neighborhood or in an area that has, you know, homes on much larger lots surrounding it. So if we had that buffer, and I was prepared to offer a motion, if we could do that, to require that landscape buffer, to put in that we was gonna require the masonry products on four sides, but what I'm hearing is...
Well, and when you said that, I, and then I heard what the, the city attorney said, and I can respect his opinion on that, I was gonna voluntarily say we'll add it to the plat with those two items, with the buffer, and, and it will be all masonry. I mean, it's, they're gonna be all hardy, or if we end up changing anything, it's be brick. Brick fronts with hardy on three sides, but it'll be all masonry type products, and I was, I was ready to offer that up because that's, that's our intent. But like I said, we're not asking for anything new that's not been approved in the past, and typically on rezonings, even on PUDs, this is very similar to what we've, we've seen in the past.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer. Any other discussion or thoughts?
Would it be appropriate to ask the developer if he would prefer that we vote on the zoning tonight and not wait for more information?
Well, I mean, I think he just said that he would agree to the two things that I was gonna ask to be added. I, I don't wanna do anything in a lot of the city attorney's opinion that would in any way put us in a bad position.
I think, I think Commissioner Crutcher, what I, what I was commenting on is, you had a plan that came through the planning commission, you know, they've approved it, sent it to you for the rezoning request. It's before you. If, if there is some specific design issue that you're wanting, in addition to what we see on this plan, I simply am not aware that you can require. Now, the developer said he's going to do it, and you're talking about really doing some buffer work and putting in some trees. I'm not sure how important that is, but I, I'm just, what I'm saying is, I'm not aware, without having looked at this, what your recourse is if, once the rezoning is done, it doesn't get done. Certainly, you've got the ability to communicate with your planning commission and tell them what, you know, what you would prefer, because it's gonna come back before the planning commission more, more than one time. But I can have you an answer about what your ability is to add additional design requests by the next meeting. I think you meet in two weeks. So that's my, that's my comment on it.
Feel more comfortable having an answer, one way or the other.
Okay, so if we're ready for a vote, all in favor of deferring?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business. Discuss and take action. Filling open seats. Number one, planning commission. There's two seats. And we have applicants, Mike Anderson, James Power, Kristi Slater, and Angela Wilburn, and then we had a Mr. Calley. Yes? Okay. Oh, there's three?
Oh, yes, sorry. Those are the additional seat.
Oh, really? Okay. Can you share with us the seat, just to know what skill set we're...
Mr. Wayne Martin.
Okay.
So there's, how many seats open now? Four?
Three.
Three.
Okay, so typically what we do, we'll invite each individual up here to speak after, if they, the applicants would like to tell us anything about themselves or why they wanna serve, their experience, and then after that is done, the board, we'll ta, open up a nominations. You can nominate three candidates, and if that carries, then we would stop, but if not, we would keep on with the process until three seats were filled. Any questions or concerns on how that would work? Okay, so Mr. Anderson, are you present? If you'll come join us at the podium? I know a lot of you had stuff on your application, but if you'll just refresh our memory before we can put the application in the face together.
Okay, my name's David Mike Anderson. I go by Mike. I'm retired, seventy-one years old. I'm a builder and developer of residential and commercial property. I have never developed one in the state of Tennessee. I have worked on some new construction that was in new developments in the final stage. Most of my stuff has been in Kentucky, Florida, New Mexico, and North Carolina. And I've been on the side, these boys were on here many, many times, for small communities and large communities, and so, as I would say, I know the drill. Like I said, retired. We moved out here two years ago, and I don't build any longer. And when we saw this on the, in the newspaper, thought it'd be something for me to get back involved with, to use a little of my expertise, maybe on the other side of the table, and help with some of the issues. I've seen this scenario in this little subdivision here, not only for myself, but for other things, and I know how, I've hired land planners, from high-end people to low-end people throughout my career, and I know how to look at land planning and lot use and ingress and egress issues. I've had to buy a fire truck for a community in North Carolina in order to make it make the cul-de-sac, and I had to buy garbage lift systems in New Mexico because they were using dumpsters in all the neighborhoods instead of individual cans. And so I've addressed issues on, on this side, and I offer my services to help the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Calley.
Hi, my name's Sam Calley. I live in Fairview. Lived here about fifteen years. I'm on the industrial development board, and I'm also, I was, I'm a member of the American Legion. I'm a past adjutant for the American Legion in town. I would like, with the industrial board and the planning commission, I would like to tie them together so we can, you know, some cross-pollination and think more about homes and businesses together. And I'm not in the building business or the real estate business. I'm a businessman, so I don't have a, a dog in the hunt as far as property goes in town. And I just wanna help the citizens of Fairview and the town of Fairview.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Power.
I really don't know a whole lot to say. Since I was sixteen years old, I've been building houses, taking care of property and that kinda thing. I have worked in getting zoning and things in Franklin, Nashville, out in Le Verne, Son. I think I met this woman one day out there, but, and I can't remember her name, so I said, "This woman, please don't hold that against me." I've just, over the time that, that I've been watching, and I am very happy in the direction the planning commission seems to be going now. But the issue tonight, one of the things that was said at this podium that I don't like, is this is the way we've always done it before. It's time that we quit doing the things we've done before. Because if we keep doing the things the way we've done before, it's not gonna be long till we're gonna be a little spring hill over here. What's, we can go in this county and see things that didn't work. We don't have to go out of state or anywhere else, and I would like to just be a part of that. I think I do have the experience in dealing with different issues because of my experience in the construction fields, that I would be able to do this. I think most of you know me, and like I said, whenever I, whenever, each one of you talk to me about voting for you, I ask you what your, what thing, what was your, gonna be your goal if I voted for you as commissioner. And my goal would be, on the planning commission, is when people come up here, it's not anymore this, this is the way we've always done it. Maybe, maybe some of that works, but we've got to look to the future and, and not the past. Fairview used to be, we would take anything because we was desperate to get rooftops out here. We're not in that position anymore. Saying no should be in our vocabulary, not just, "Let's make it as smooth as we can for a developer." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Kristi?
My name is Kristi Slaughter, just like you kill someone, unfortunately. I have been a resident of Fairview since 2000. I moved here the weekend of the big flood, or, I'm sorry, 2010. I moved here the weekend of the big flood. I love this town. I saw it was growing. I currently work for Habitat for Humanity, which is a affordable housing mortgage company. It is not a giveaway. It is not free homes. But I think that Fairview needs to make sure that as they go in the future, that they look at housing for everybody and that we see what we wanna be. And we don't wanna be a spring hill, and we don't wanna be necessarily a, a Brentwood. So I think that I don't have a lot of the construction experience that some of these people do, but I have lived in a lot of towns, and I know that sidewalks and communities are important, and being able to know your neighbor is important. And maybe you have higher density over here, and maybe you have your big lots over here, so that everybody can be included and so that we can all have the rural amazing community that we want to have. And I think that we just wanna keep Fairview a gem, and that's what I would want to do for all of us.
Thank you. Okay, and Angela Wilburn?
Hello? I just want a second. What the last gentleman up here mentioned about the planning commission. I've been coming to the meetings for a few months now, and I really do like the direction that they've been, they've been moving in. I actually loved your comment about why can't we get a pool in any of the developments at one of the last meetings. But my background is in healthcare and business management. I certainly don't have the background that some of the applicants here do. Throughout my years in healthcare management, though, I was responsible for construction projects, whether that was new build or renovation. I love strategic planning. I like space planning. I have a true interest. I don't feel that I've done my share over the years. In fact, I'm not sure I've done... I hopefully will retire here, and I've, I have two kids that hopefully will have grandchildren soon. And I would like to be involved with the direction that we take in building the community. I also don't want a spring hill. I want it to be a nice place. I want there to be variability. I want us to attract, whatever our strategic plan of the city says, we want to attract. I think I'm fair. I would just really like the honor to participate in the Planning Commission, if you see that my background, experiences, and skills would be a good fit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, if you'll see, there are three different expiration dates for the spots that are open. So if you would please specify how you want these to fall as you make a motion.
Well, would it be better if we did each term one at a time, and whoever's nominated and vote on it individually, since they're different terms? Any thoughts? Is that good with you?
Good to go.
Everybody? That might be, because we're looking at a term instead of names, you know? Okay, so, well, yes.
Mayor, I apologize. As you may recall, at the, at the most recent work session, there was some discussion about overlapping members on some of the boards and committees, and we have some of the applicants for the Planning Commission who do serve on other boards. So this would certainly be the pleasure of the board, but you, you may want to consider whether or not those applicants would, would be willing to be removed from one seat to fill another seat if it was a pleasure of the board. Again, there's no requirement, but there was that discussion as, as you move forward, so just as a point of consideration.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, Mayor. I'd, I'd actually written that down, that we talked about that at the workshop, and I think we have...
Two?
Somebody was on the Industrial Board.
Mr. Calley.
Mr. Calley's on the Industrial Board, and then Mr. Power is on the Park Board. Is that right? And Mr. Power, are you just, are you just a citizen at large on that board, or are you a representative from one of the other groups?
I'm a citizen at large.
Citizen at large. So I guess the question would be then, do those individuals are, based on the direction we're moving with the commissions and boards, are they willing to vacate that seat to serve on the Planning Commission?
Sure.
Okay. So Mr. Calley said he would vacate the Industrial Board if he was selected.
If selected, yeah.
If selected for planning. What about you, Mr. Power? You are?
I'm sure.
That's a harder one, I know.
I mean, I, I agree with that part, so, I mean, that is my, my passion, but...
Okay.
I'm sure that's magic, but I'm not trying to...
Well, and what we were, what the discussion is, is like, what, we would have people, for so long, we didn't have enough people volunteering, so we would put people on multiple boards. And then when they quit, we're filling multiple board seats. So if we gave everybody opportunities to serve at different levels, that we would get more citizens involved, was the intent. And did you have something, Mr. Burks?
Actually, I was going to say the very same thing. You did.
Well, good deal.
Very intelligent, not...
Oh, yeah, thank you. We, okay, so, anyway, we'll go from there. That's our logic. It works for today. So is that something you're willing, if you take this seat, you want to move? Okay. Okay, so I'll open it up for the 6:30, 2017. It expires that quickly?
That was Mr. Lomond's seat.
And how many, that's going to make it a little...
I would go ahead and appoint it for the full term.
Absolutely. I would appoint it for the unexpired term and the term that begins July 1.
Okay, and so what would that, what's the expiration date?
It's three years.
Three years, so it's 2020. 20 sounds so weird. Okay, so that seat, we would be, we would have this individual for the next few months, and then starting a new term on 2020.
I'll nominate Mike Anderson for that term.
Okay, got a nomination, get a second?
Second.
Okay. First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next term is 6:30, 2018.
I nominate, I nominate Jim Power.
Okay, got a nomination for Mr. Power?
Second.
Got a second? Okay. Any more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. And that leaves us with a third seat.
Mayor, I'd move that we nominate Kristy Slaughter.
Okay, got a nomination? Get a second?
Second.
Okay, got a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, welcome. Thank you for everybody that put your applications in, and please stay tuned. We will be watching as things change and seats come up, and just really would love your service, and I'm glad that we got some diverse people wanting, and I think it's important for the Planning Commission, everybody can offer something. And so, just encourage you to wish I had five seats, but, you know, we don't, so please apply again and look for other areas. Speaking of, we have other areas. So now we have a Park Board position open, and the ones that we're supposed to vote on. So moving on to that, we're going to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. There's two seats up. We only had one applicant.
Nominate Scott Tucker.
Okay.
Second.
He's here.
Okay, got a first and second. Any discussion?
Do we need...
I'm sorry, Mr. Lucas, Commissioner?
And are we under the same guidelines, because he's also the Chair of the Industrial Board? So...
That's a good point.
Yeah.
The Chair of the Industrial Board should actually be one of the board. I will give up the Tree Board, but some more, I'd like to give it up. Just... I think, yes, on your... I agree, Industrial, I think, so there would be Tree Board.
Well, I appreciate that. It really doesn't remedy the, the issue that we're trying to fix, because what we've had in the past is we have individuals holding multiple seats on, or a seat on multiple boards, and when that individual resigns, then we lose that person on all of those boards, and we have to replace them. So, and I don't think we can pick and choose...
I can do all three, just, the two, two is the, two of the things before, and I don't want to give up the industrial, because that's, I can be able to use there, but as far as the, I can do this particular, that type of thing, you call it.
Well, it does still have the same dilemma that you're mentioning of, he is correct, those, both of those boards don't meet a whole lot, but it, it still would leave us, if he did leave, having to fill two seats, so. I guess the best scenario in this would probably, and he said Industrial Board was more of his, you know, passion, if we were going with the one, then, you know, that would be the one you would want.
Yes.
Yeah. So that would leave us with no, no way to fill the seat right now, and there's two openings.
Will we, at that point, just re-advertise that? I think that's probably the proper thing to do.
Okay. Thank you for being willing to serve on three boards, and we appreciate that, but if your passion is industrial, let's keep you there, so...
I would draw the nomination.
Okay. And do we have a second? Yeah, okay. Okay, Industrial Development Board, there's two seats, but no applicants. Then we'll move to the Tree Board, and now it looks like we may have two Tree Board seats.
Yeah, I'll go ahead, since you don't want, hold it to our time, Tree Board.
Yeah, but there's nobody to vote. Is there, is there a Tree Board? Did I miss it?
No.
Okay.
Well, and the other, the other thing, Mayor, that we need to keep in mind is, is that, based on the discussion at the workshop, we're going to reduce the number of members of all of these boards, with the exception of the Planning Commission, to five members. So there may or may not be this many openings, once that's done.
We'll go back and recalculate after tonight, and get something out to the board to let you know exactly how many you have on each slot, based on that reduction to five for each of those boards.
And including those that are expiring in June.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me try.
And, and will that, but those numbers start July 1, or immediately?
Should be.
Well, no, no, no. I mean, the reduction of the board members, the numbers.
We'll prepare, we'll prepare ordinances to come back to the City Council, and you will actually vote to adopt an ordinance, the numbers, the specific number of members to those boards, and that's, that will be the, and it will be effective at the date of the passage, or whatever date after that you should choose.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, and then Beer Board, we still, now, normally we have people jump in at the Beer Board.
Well, and that's one of those that we're going to ask for an opinion as to whether or not the City Commission can just serve as the Beer Board and not have citizen members.
Correct.
So it limits it to five as well, because basically they come up here for five minutes of their time, usually. Okay, good.
Okay, so we'll move on. As soon as I find my agenda.
Is, is a point of clarification on that? If, if we do that, which is great, that makes it easy, would you still be required to have a Beer Board meet, or would you just have those applications be heard by the Board of Commissioners as the body of the Board of Commissioners, rather than the Beer Board? If that makes sense?
It's the latter.
Okay, okay, thank you. Gotcha.
Okay. That will bring us to New Business B, Discuss and Take Action, Time Period of Verbiage Required and Signage for Rezoning and Annexation. Commissioner Burks?
Yes. I asked that this be brought onto the agenda, because there was some complaints about the signage that was put out for this last rezoning and, or annexation. The sign, people feel, are too small, was not placed appropriately, and it doesn't really have enough information. We discussed this at my committee meeting on Wednesday, and I believe our new city planner has some good ideas on perhaps how we can improve that, maybe a bigger sign. I'd like to see something very large. When people drive down the road, I want them to see it. I don't want this little bitty, tiny sign. I want something several feet wide, four or five feet. I want everyone to see it, everybody to know, and not lose it in the "Vote For Me" signs, or "Come Join My Church" sign, or Realtor signs. I want it to stand out. I think it needs to go out the very day that we get an application in for rezoning request or annexation. It needs to go out that day or the very next day. If possible, the more notice, the better.
Let us work on it. Let's, let's do a little background work on that specific part.
No, fine.
Certainly, we want to get as quick as we can, but let me make...
And I'm, I'm good with that. I wanted to bring up, see if anyone else had any ideas, because I know that was a complaint I was receiving, and I think that's an easy fix.
I like that, and I think we should also make sure that sign has enough, that it's big enough, that you're not, that you can easily see who to contact, where to contact, phone numbers, emails, or, you know, we jokingly said we could put a QR code on it, so you just scan it on your phone, and it'd automatically link you to the Fairview website. So, you know, but whatever we can do to make it easier.
Want as much information as possible out there for the citizens, so they know exactly what's coming up.
Only suggestion I would have, I mean, I'm all for if, if that's a complaint, or the citizens, you know, have had issues with it, but it does have to follow our sign ordinance. So we do have guidelines on how big a removable sign can be, so we just need to make sure, you know, whatever it is, meets our...
Can we not ask, can we not ask for variants?
We can, we can, but then we'll have to write it, yeah.
We'll certainly follow it. We, we have discussion, we've already been looking at some ideas to do that, so we'll follow up and get you some samples and others such as that.
I just wanted to get on the agenda so we can move that process forward.
Just nothing like the city breaking their own rules now. Okay, so this was just for discussion, and...
Yes.
Okay, we'll move forward. Okay. Okay. See, Discuss and Take Action, Recommendation for Planning Commission on Rezoning, Pluminary Master Plan for, was it Rochdale Estates off of Cumberland, RS 40 to R 20 PUD overlay? Oh, I'm sorry, MAP 47 parcel 66-00, 33.81 acres, ownerlanddevelopment.com. Okay?
Is anyone here tonight for that?
I think this is one of those weird things, it's just us putting it on here so that the attorney can draft the paperwork. I think. Is that what it is?
That's correct. And there's, there's no reason to take an action on that, and you won't have these coming forward to you on that, so you, you could take action or not, but the documents can be brought to you as a part of our discussion previously, so...
Okay. Is that something we can take off of practice that we probably shouldn't have been...
We are. We have, we discussed today a list of things off there, so they wouldn't come to you.
Great.
Madam Mayor, before we go to the next item, can we go ahead and take our nine o'clock conference break, because this will probably be an item that needs to be discussed, link in some link.
Sounds good. Ten minutes early? No, I'm joking. Okay, we'll take a recess, and five minutes top, two, if you can do it in that.
I don't think they had on camera.
Take a recess. Where are we? Okay, we'll return the meeting, and that will bring us to Item D, Discuss and Take Action, and Recommendation from Planning Commissioner, an Annex Request of Auto Creek Subdivision off of Old Nashville. Road map 42 parcel 78 with 87.71 acres, 78.01 with a 15 acres, 79 with 13 acres, 79.01 with 16.4 acres, owner Rita Kidder and Jennifer Buford.
Is this the same situation as the one before, it's just to get papers drawn up?
Yes, sir.
Or that's?
Yes, that's the same with 10D and 10E. So there'll be no action for you in, in the future. These will be removed. These are historical, historically been included in, but there's no, there's no provision for action by the board. So it's certainly a pleasure to, to discuss. There effectively will be no action to be taken. I don't believe the applicants are here, so regarding the discussion, rather than just having discussion, action of the applicant.
So these items will be on the next meeting?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
For first reading?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, do I need to read 10E also? No? Okay. So we'll, well, that made it really short. Okay, let me find the, oh, actually, I've said it was 10E, but is there another side? Nope. Okay. Do we have anything after that? My pages are? Okay.
F, G, and H.
Okay. Well, go ahead and read that, because I'm still finding that page, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor.
Under New Business, 10F, Discuss and/or Take Action on Resolution Number 05-17, a resolution enacting a moratorium on planned unit developments as well as future residential developments more dense than R 20. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Oh, I'm sorry, I took a drop. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, this is a, I requested this resolution be drawn and just be put on the agenda tonight. As we all know, and as we can see from the public interest, we have a bunch of developments that have been brought forth that are asking for the PUD designation. We are in the process, as a city, of doing a comprehensive plan. As, as part of that comprehensive plan, there's going to be a, a look at, into the existing land use map. Until we have completed that comprehensive plan and have a better handle on what we envision in terms of growth for the City of Fairview in the foreseeable future, I suggest that we consider doing a moratorium on the PUD designations and anything more dense than the RS 20. Of course, that has no effect whatsoever on commercial development. It has no effect on any lot sizes larger than the RS 20. But it would at least give us some time as a city in light of the significant growth that we expect over the course of the near future to get Mr. Owens' firm to finish doing the work that they're doing on the sub regs, zoning ordinances, and to just reflect on where we are and where we want to go.
Okay. Any other comments?
Also, I'd want to point out, this would not affect anything that's, that's currently in the pipeline as far as a pending PUD or other designation. The other issue, this will allow us really to get our planning done, work on our land use map, update zoning if we wish to. Also, we can tackle some of the important issues that we, that we're facing. I think everyone knows what that is, so.
Well, and I, and I hope that it will, one of the ones, I'm sure Commissioner Burks was talking about, I hope that it will bring a sense of urgency to the sewer situation.
Well, I know originally when we talked, we were talking, do we just do PUDs or the whole, doing the R 20? But I think there is a time and a place for the PUD, you know? So I think that's a good way to go, especially as we figure out, you know, what we want the city to look like in the future. So I think that'll, you know, be a good direction. Any other?
And Mayor, if I may, the one thing that I didn't say is that this will sunset on June 2nd, excuse me, January 2nd, 2019.
Okay.
Also, Mayor, I would say, I've heard Mr. Collins say this several times. We had a nice article about Fairview in the Tennessee area recently, for the next big small town, I think. But we want to get it right. We want to do it in a very intelligent way. We just don't want to throw things up, because we know there's a lot of people that want to come here. It's a great community. We all love it, and I expect everyone that's coming here will as well. But we need to make sure we do it right. We get one good chance. And we need to take the time to make sure we plan it out, and we do it the right way.
I agree. I do think, though, it's not just this. We got to get our subdivision regulations. If our standards are higher, we need to make our codes and our building codes reflect that. So I think this is just a start. And with all that, we can kind of get that vision. So, I definitely agree. Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and that would bring us to G, right? Discuss and Take Action, an Ordinance 2017-5?
An Ordinance to Amend City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Code Title VII, Chapter 5, Section 7-501 through 7-514 Fireworks. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any discussion? I guess.
Yes, Mayor. I had, was under the impression that we were on this item as well. We were going to have a sunset clause as well, so that January 1st, we could kind of relook at this because of the fact that we did have some, some reasons for concern, kind of going into it. And so that was, that was the only kind of question I have, because I don't see that in here. And it was my understanding that was going to be in here.
Okay. Anybody share on that?
Mayor, if I may, I don't, I, I talked to Commissioner Lucas earlier. I don't recall us ever discussing a sunset provision with respect to this, this ordinance. You know, certainly, I think there was a point in time in this discussion where we had wanted some clarification from the city attorney, and then we changed counsel in the middle of that discussion. And Mr. Potter came to the last meeting and appalled that, that we could do this with nonprofits. So that was enough for me at that point to move forward with the ordinance as drafted tonight. But I don't recall there being any discussion about, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, go ahead.
If I may, the, the miscommunication on the, on the question of the sunset would falls on my responsibility. I did have the conversation with Commissioner Lucas about doing that. We, we were in the process of wording that. And as we got into writing that, I just simply failed to have that included there as a part of the discussion. So this thing happened pretty quickly, and I apologize for that. So Commissioner, Commissioner Lucas brought that to us as part of the discussion, and I knew we were going to bring that up there. I just simply did not get it included in where we have. So there was no question about the, the actual language of it, other than Commissioner Lucas requested me was, obviously, this applies to 4th of July, it applies to New Year's. His question was, would it be worth considering opening it up or closing it at the conclusion of those two sale seasons? If that makes any sense? So that's how the, that's what the discussion was in that, so.
Well, those are the only two periods of the year that we actually sell anywhere, that you're allowed to sell within, within the city. I mean, it, it doesn't, I understand the concern, I appreciate the concern. It just, it just seems to me counterintuitive to have to go back and reconsider this over and over and over, and then we'd have to redo it. I mean, if we decide at some point in the future that we want to I mean, if we decide at some point in the future that we want to repeal this ordinance, we can repeal the ordinance versus having to do it, versus doing a sunset and then having to reenact an ordinance to be able to do it again next year.
Sure, understood. That was just how the, I didn't want you to think there was some miscommunication between the two of you, there was not. That was just the discussion there, so.
Well, couldn't we just designate? I mean, he has a point. I mean, I know that we could, there could be a business. You think of the gas stations that have the fireworks, you know, sells all year long. I mean, we could restrict when it could be sold, but just not have to readdress it, right? I mean, yeah.
Mayor, if I could interject, you know, I took a look in drafting this ordinance, I took a look at your existing, uh, chapter five, uh, excuse me, you know, chapter five of Article Seven, and in five, in seven dash five oh seven, which I have, will remain, is currently adopted.
Okay.
That section actually talks about the times when fireworks may be sold.
Okay.
And it says that shall be restricted to following dates and times, and those dates and times only, July third, fourth, and fifth, from noon to eleven P.M. inclusive, and then December thirty-one, from noon to January one, one A.M. inclusive, and January one and two, from noon to eleven P.M., each day inclusive. And it also has some geographic restrictions, so that's already there. But what had previously been repealed was the, just granting the permit at all. So the act, the sections that I have included in this ordinance would supplement the sections that already exist.
Okay, so I probably misunderstood what y'all were saying, then. What is the thought process behind it?
And just so I can be clear, my, my concern is not when they're selling the fireworks. I mean, we're, I think the, the nature of what they're doing determines when they're going to sell the fireworks. That's not my issue. My issue was from day one, I had the problem with the, this group can sell and this group can't sell. I think potentially, um, that could be, that could down the road be a problem. So my thought process was that if we at least put a sunset clause on this, let two, two selling seasons, if you want to call it that, pass, look at it, if everything looks good, then you can remove the sunset clause and just make an ordinance altogether. But since this is so new to our city, and I don't know that we really found, and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong on this, I don't know that it necessarily found a lot of cities trying to do what we're, we're looking to do here. And so I'd like to be able to try this for a year and come back, and if we don't have any problems, great, but if we do, we can kind of rediscover it. I don't think, that's an unreasonable request, since I do have some hesitations about it.
Commissioner Lucas, I did not survey what all other cities were doing. I generally just researched the question I was asked, and that was whether or not nonprofits could be granted this ability to sell and other groups not. I found an attorney general opinion that I thought was very specific to that, that allows you to do it. So I think what you're saying, though, is you would like a sunset provision added to this ordinance, that after certain dates, permits would not be granted, period, unless this body renews it.
Correct, or we could at least, before that period, we could look back at it, make sure everything went well for this first year that we tried this, and if it does, then go from there. But if not, we can kind of step back and see where, where we might need to change some things.
I, I have a question about, so we can only sell fireworks July third, fourth, and fifth, only three days?
No, ma'am, currently, the, currently, the language, it's in five dash, excuse you, it's in seven dash five oh seven. It's not for you, because it's just remaining as it is currently adopted. You, you have a, in your, uh, in your code, you have a section regarding the sale of fireworks.
Right.
And what this body previously did apparently was repeal those provisions that allowed the permits to be issued. So effectively, those are moot provisions. But what I'm doing in this draft is I'm putting the language back in about you can get a permit, you can sell, but there is already a section that I understand to be in place, and that's seven dash five oh seven, uh, the conditions for sale and for use of permissible articles. And in that section, it talks about when fireworks can be sold.
Right, and what are those dates?
And those dates are July third, fourth, and fifth, from noon to eleven P.M. December thirty-one, from noon to January one, at one A.M. January one and two, from noon to eleven P.M.
Well, would it not make?
That's all we have right now.
Would it not make sense that we allow, I mean, if we're not letting nonprofits do it, they could sell for more days than just that? I mean, that seems like a awful lot of work to be able to sell fireworks, third, fourth, and fifth.
The, the short answer is yes. You, you could simply amend the motion to include whatever dates you wanted to include.
If I recall.
I think, I was going to interject, because I think I may have been misreading that. I think Johnson's pointed this out to me. This might be the language that's already in existence, it's about when the fireworks can be used, so I apologize.
Okay, so they can be sold, there's no, there's no selling guideline?
They get their permit to sell, but that, this is when they can be used, my apologies.
Okay.
And that language already exists in seven dash five oh seven.
So there's no limit, there's no, so they could set up their fireworks stand tomorrow if they wanted to? But there's no limit when they can set there, when we can issue permits?
I think there's a state limit.
Okay.
For permitting for that.
Okay. But it's a pretty wide, yes, okay, thank you.
And Kim, but we could set a specific date, time. We could say one week before July fourth, one week before New Year's, is when this, you can sell.
Yeah, you got, they got to get permitted by the City of Fairview, but they've also got to have a state fire marshal permit. So I think the City of Fairview could say, we're only going to issue permits for certain periods of time to sell, but.
I, I think the fact that fireworks can only be used on those specific dates automatically limits when someone's going to sell fireworks.
But that's just in the city. There's lots of people that live outside the city.
If you live in Hitman County or in the county, then that's.
That's not applicable.
So you can still come in and buy, but if you live here, you just can't use them yet.
I'm fine limiting on when they can be sold. I, I don't.
I mean, I think we need to give them enough time to sell, that it's maybe worth the nonprofits' time to deal with it.
Plus, we put everybody on the same footing.
Right.
Say, this is the only times you can do it, so all the nonprofits that want to do it, on the same footing.
It's the risk of muddying or cleaning the water, depending on which direction you look at this. I haven't seen during off-seasons fireworks tents, as they're called here, at any time other than Fourth of July or New Year's, so.
Because you don't go to Murphy'sboro.
Right. So it's, it's a practical matter, for just the ease of purpose for where you are, I, I probably would leave the ordinance as written with the authorization to sell, and then if there was a motion to revisit it later, simply because of the fact we haven't observed fireworks tents being located in other, in other locations during the off-season, so to speak.
You haven't traveled much in Tennessee, haven't you?
I have been, I have been to this county and I sixty-five.
What are you talking?
Love her fireworks in Tennessee.
Oh, well.
So for that, for that reason alone, I probably would, I would leave this in force as it is until, for the, simply it's regulated by the state already, so that may offer you some, some security in that.
And on page one, section seven dash five oh one, purpose, the purpose of this chapter is to provide for the use, should we say the use and sale of certain fireworks, just so that it's clear, or does use cover us on that? I just want to be, make sure that it's clear, I don't.
I would think use covers it.
Okay.
I think it does, because we call it permitting separately from sales.
Good deal.
And just to go back to Hamlin, I think there is some requirement, either two weeks or thirty days, I think the state, I mean, but we'll just leave it be. I agree with what Mr. Collins is saying.
Well, I agree, but I mean, I don't want, let's just say you can only sell it for a week. I mean, that, if we put that narrow window on there, I don't want us to.
That's not the way it's currently drafted.
Okay, good.
As to Commissioner Lucas's point, my suggestion would be leave it as is without a sunset date, and then if you feel there's a need, just bring it back up for reconsideration, because otherwise, if everything's good, we don't have to worry about it. We don't have to try to get it rewritten, you know, have two more readings of it. At that point, we can just let it go. Whereas if there is an issue, we just bring it back up for consideration at that time. That's just my thought process on it, just a little more streamlined.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, right?
Yes.
In a second, so as is, so we'll take a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item is city manager.
Now we get H.
Oh, H, no, I don't have a H. It's one we added.
A resolution authorizing retirement of a patrol service dog Lexi from K nine unit in donation to police officer Terry Ammonet. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any discussion or any comments?
None from the city.
Okay. Okay. So anyway, we're just retiring the dog, and we're giving him permission to keep the dog?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now to the city managers.
Yes, Mayor, I was, I was thanking you for that last, but, um, a couple of things I have for you, just quickly. I presented to you informally tonight, I put in front of your seats, the proposed budget for two thousand seventeen eighteen fiscal year beginning July first. Included in that is the proposed budget, the capital budget for two thousand seventeen eighteen, and a proposed five-year capital plan that would not be a part of the voted, voted-on budget, but for our purposes that we discussed previously. In addition to that, I've provided you with copies of the proposed play, pay plan that we discussed at the work session this past Saturday, or there are, have been zero changes made to the pay plan, as was discussed in our meeting. There was some cleanup of the operating budget, as we discussed, for a couple of items. First was some travel and training adjustments that needed to be made. Second was an expenditure for tree plantings that were, I believe it was an email that we discussed about some items that had been previously approved. That adjustment was made in the budget, the cost of the forest management plan from ten thousand to twelve thousand five hundred, and we included some money in the budget for some improvements to this room, in addition to the electronic improvements that we made. We discussed previously, obviously, the improvements to this room, and second to that, and subsequent to that, we discussed a readjustment of the seating, as we see it in, in the room here, for mayor, council, planning commission, and staff to be moved. So those were the adjustments that were made to the budget, other than that is substantially the same. The plan right now, as you know, for budgets, they require two readings and a public hearing. Our budget must be in place by June one. My anticipation is that our budget will be in place a month early. As, as we sit here tonight, we plan on having the first reading for the budget at the next meeting, which will be May eighteenth, have the second reading and the public hearing on the, the meeting subsequent to that, which will be June one. So it's our anticipation that we would have our budget a month, a month in advance, which is great for the city and helps us with some planning. So I have that before you, and we'll have a full presentation at the next meeting, in addition to presentation for the public hearing, in case there are any questions there. So just wanted to highlight that, and thank you for your time and effort for that work session. I know that's a big commitment on, on, on your part, however, I think some of the work done at that work session, just the discussions that we had, really set the table for some positive things to happen in the City of Fairview, and that, that, that working relationship is great to have, so we certainly appreciate that. Lastly, as you may know, or as you do know, we've gone through a series of staff changes within the city. The last of those was completed today. Lieutenant Scott Hughes, who's in the room tonight, has accepted the position as fire chief for the City of Fairview. We, we have that done, so with the installation of Chief Hughes, who will be formally, take the role as chief next Friday, May twelve, that will give us new positions of police chief, assistant police chief, fire chief, city planner, city attorney, in a fairly short period of time, which is a huge commitment on the part of the board commissioners of the City of Fairview. I understand that there was some work and effort some months ago to put those positions in place. You, you've been faithful in that effort to get that done, and certainly that will benefit the City of Fairview as we move forward. So on behalf of the residents, of which I'm now a part, thank you for that, and on behalf of the city, thank you for your commitment to that. I think Chief Hughes will do a great job, and certainly, we've seen from, from, from Ms. Costanzo tonight, the benefit in having that staff person here for those discussions. So with that, I just want you to know, those staff positions are complete. We look forward to building on that, and we appreciate your commitment moving forward to, to all the things that we have going, going in the city, so that's all I have for you.
Thank you. I'm going to be really disappointed not to have six meetings in the month of June trying to get the budget done.
I, I would love to make it more, more work for you, but, but hopefully, it, we have it substantially done.
That was a joke. This'll be nice, I'm excited. Okay, Commissioner Rainey?
Nothing.
Okay, and Commissioner Lucas?
Yes, Mayor, I want to just say welcome to the new city planner, Ms. Costanza. Welcome to the team, also to all the citizens, that, a lot of them have already left, but that came out tonight. As a commissioner, I really appreciate them coming out, voicing their opinions, the emails that they've sent. That means a lot, and hopefully, that continues in other areas as we grow as well. And so I just appreciate them taking the time out to come out here and, and be here for that, and, and voicing their opinions.
Thank you. Commissioner Burris?
I would take this opportunity to congratulate Chief Hughes, our new city planner, new attorney, new people everywhere.
Oh, I forgot the attorney. I'll go back, sorry.
That's always good. You get the attorney. Sort of like an umpire on the baseball field, you don't want to know he's there.
It's nine thirty, that's all I can say. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
We're moving forward, we're making changes as a city, and I think we're making very positive changes. Long meeting tonight, some issues are more difficult than others, but we didn't get elected to have an easy job, and I appreciate my fellow commissioners for asking the questions and getting in-depth in these issues. I really appreciate our citizens who've come out tonight, who've been calling, who've been emailing. Got to stay involved, we really appreciate it, and I hope that we have this many people at every meeting. It'd be very nice. I know it's not always possible, but thank y'all for coming.
Okay, I'll jump to the attorney and then come back to you.
I have no comments.
Oh, okay. Good thing, because I wasn't going to ask you. No, I'm joking. Okay, Vice Mayor?
I have nothing, non-Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Welcome, Chief, to your new role. Glad to have you. Excited to have you back with us, Kristen. I think that'll be great, and you've already shown tonight, you're going to already be ready to go and ground running, whether you knew what you'd be running for, but we're excited about it and look forward to having you. I also appreciate the citizens' input, the calling, coming. I say many times, the rezoning is the hardest part of our job, anything, and, you know, the planning commission and, has a hard job, and then obviously, a lot come, it comes up to the board of commissioners, but this is one of the most important things that we get right, and there is a fine line of personal property rights, of people wanting to sell versus, you know, development, and development's hard, and I hope some of the things that we're doing, as far as a And I hope some of the things that we're doing as far as a comprehensive plan and getting our designs correct, that maybe people, as we grow, will feel better about where we are. There is a need for homes in Fairview. I know people, we said Spring Hill, I'm sorry, Mary Rick Graham, if that ever goes anywhere. I've said it in live meetings with the audience, with mayor panels, panels about, we don't want to be Spring Hill. But it's just, we want to be proactive, not reactive, and, you know, we all know what happened to Spring Hill with the industry. And they just had to become in a, you know, a reactive state. And they're doing a lot of great things to become proactive, so I have to put a plug in. But with that said, I hope we're getting some of those things right, putting a little slowdown on the PUDs. That seems to be the biggest dilemma. And as we get the water, I think, you know, the citizens can feel good about the growth, that the growth is the right kind of growth, and I think that's what we hear the most. And then if we are growing, then what are we doing to, for infrastructure? So anyway, I, I think we're trying to head that direction. But there's always going to be somebody that wants to sell their land, and it's going to be near you. And that's going to be the challenge that this board will have to face. But thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts and opinions. And we all know that when we moved to Fairview, if you've lived here for any time, we've seen some drastic changes, and some of them for the good, and, you know, there'll be some for, that we don't like. So with that being said, thank y'all for hanging with us tonight. And if I can get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.